Instead of a pair tonight, I think we just want to have a moment of silence for all that we've lost in the last year and hope we don't lose anymore. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Close phone meeting from a week ago. First order of business, we got to approve the minutes from the last meetings. Everybody got their coffee at home and so forth. Any corrections or notations need to be made? Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. On favor? Claims and warrants for signature?
Yes.
Claims warrant?
One, three, the amounts.
Okay. End of month, January, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. This meeting is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion to accept.
Okay. In that, there's a payroll warrants in that and all that, Kathy?
Yes.
Let's go around the room first. Skip.
No, I got nothing, so Kurt's going to be here later to give it away, so you can.
John?
Yeah, I appreciate your little update on it. So far this month, we've had thirty calls for service, resulting in five arrests, two missing, four additional, one ordinance violation on animal complaint that resulted in a citation. The area MC grant will go in next week to complete, have to help you with that. The parks for the Explorer have been ordered, and we lost, it's like an undercover on that F-150. We lost that in the snowstorm last week, and we're going to fix that in a while. That's all we got.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have had a couple things. We moved into area on July eighteenth of last year, and the one thing that I've noticed that's been a big nuisance is we're on Washington. When they hit the end of Washington down there around Strawberry and B Street, they flatfly. I've seen them running forty, fifty, sixty miles over there. I've got a couple suggestions on where we can place some stop signs to maybe help with that, not just on Washington, but on...
Where is it you live now?
We live on Washington and Pine.
Oh, okay.
We have the old Whitmer House. And they, they fly through there, and it's not semis. It's just every regular day traffic. And I was thinking, what I've got here, I've got a little map that I put some lines on, but I was thinking to help with slowing them down on Washington, Jefferson, and Madison, that there could be some stop signs placed approximately six, depending on which, which way they look at going, if there's something that could be done. Do you guys get the badge?
First question I'm going to ask you, have you contacted the Sheriff's Department to contact the town marshal? We have a, he works forty hours a week, seven days a week, and that's all the town can afford besides reserves and them. Well, he can't be everywhere, if he's trying to patrol at nighttime when summer comes, more stuff's going on at night.
It seems like he talks through the day that they're faster speed.
But without him knowing, so that's how, you call the Park Sheriff's Department and ask them to contact upon them a town marshal, and he will get with you, which he's right behind you now. But, and then that way he can know what's, you know, basically what times, you know? And I know it is a little fast, early in the morning for the Saul meal there and lunchtime.
I was going to say.
No, I mean, it's where it's come from. I mean, everybody in town knows it, so I mean, it's not a thing. But if you start there and you can talk to him right after a meeting.
I've had a meeting with the supervisor of Saul, but also.
Thank you.
We'd asked for that before, to go out, give them a warning.
Can we have a copy of that, and then we'll just take that under advisement and talk about it?
By all means.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
I have a claim A and a claim B. I didn't highlight up here because I wasn't sure what would show up, but this is what I've done. Kind of give you an idea of what I was thinking.
All right, well, thank you.
I'll be off tomorrow and make sure everybody gets one.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hi, yes, my name is Tony Elton. Just getting, I'm a little nervous, my first time. I have two things. First off, I live on 538 Madison, and every year my alley becomes a mud pit. And two years ago, they blocked it off, and the people went around, went into Mr. Garrett's yard, going around the blockades, and I was wanting to know, I went and talked to Rock Cory about putting number two rock in, nine ton, okay? And I was wanting to know if you could, if you could help me possibly haul the white rock, so that it don't cost me as much to place the white rock from my property line to the alley. I was addressed today, my nephew works for the city, okay? He let me know today that I have a small claims with the utility office for five hundred dollars, okay? And they told him that maybe I should take care of the small claim before I ask for any kind of assistance like that. I'm going to take care of the small claims, but the driveway, my, the alleyway is to my driveway, and it's, I've already been stuck in it twice. And when it starts, everything starts falling out, it completely turns into a mud pit. I'm sure you guys are aware of it. I live at the bottom of the hill, and I get all the runoff from up top. And all I'm asking is that if I pay for the, the white rock, if they can use the city truck to haul the white rock to dump into my, into the alleyway there.
And, well, let me speak up.
Yeah, go ahead.
A couple of years ago, we quit working on alleys that was used for driveways, but what you're saying, I have no, as long as you're out there, the day that we would pick up, pay for the, and we haul it, I have nothing to help in people myself, as long as they're paying for the rock.
We do the alley, but we couldn't do your driveway on the end towards the house.
No, this is out in the alley, but we quit doing that because.
Out by the road, where it runs out.
From the road to my, to the hole.
He's wanting to go from the road to where he uses that for.
So you use the alleyway to access your driveway, and you want to put the rock in the alleyway to get to your driveway?
Yes, ma'am.
We do have some funds that the town, if we're putting it in our alley, we've got some funds to work with, but right now, am I right?
Same thing.
It's not your time to put it down.
Not really, well.
Because it's a thing. It's just going to sink in, and then you're going to be back to.
You might be able to put the number twos in.
Twos is bigger and would come back down.
Because you're talking about, you're talking about white rock.
If we do that, and if we put white rock on top of it, see what I'm saying? Then you put like the fifty threes, if we put something in it to hold it.
Well, I talked to the Cory in the alley, the nine ton, said, measure everything up, and he said, take nine tons of two inches thick through there, and then once all that settles, I'm going to have your smaller's all brought in, and you dump it in.
What are you saying?
No, but just like she said, can't make, can't make him pay for it, and somebody else wants it done.
Well, I thought a year or so ago, we quit, besides building some holes, we quit addressing the alleys because they were using for driveways.
We tried to maintain them, but we have to also.
But, yeah, the maintenance, where we can get up and down with the utility truck.
Think about it, you can go down there, and I'm, I'm pretty sure they still have it down there, the black that they, the mull stalk of the, you can buy it for ten dollars a ton, where that rock is probably, what, fifteen?
They told me for nine ton, it cost me a hundred and twenty dollars for nine tons of number two. And they, it's going to cost me a hundred dollars.
Fifty-three inch, that's higher than the.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
It's going to cost me a hundred dollars to have the number two nine ton haul from there to 538 Madison.
So he's just wanting to use facility to haul the truck, to use the truck. That's what he's asking.
She said, we've got funds that we could pay for. It's holding in the town alley, and I can't see him having to pay for it.
Smooth it out.
Tell him, Dave, we'll just take care of the weather break.
Would it, it would be bad to haul it in right now?
Yes, sir.
So with the weather, if it keeps on like this, you know, drying out, no more snow or whatever, I can see the town will put it in there, then you take care of your driveway, we'll put, we'll, we'll put it in the alley itself. I mean, and anybody else piles up there, want it done or whatever.
Is it okay if I do it?
Yes.
Myself?
Yeah.
I mean, from the.
From the alley to your garage doors, that's yours anyway. We're going, we're going to do it from the street up, we're going to do that.
Okay, well, once you do that, can I go ahead and put some, to dress it up?
Yes.
Okay? And my other thing is, is that I'm not so sure if you're all familiar with me, but since I've moved here to Mazuma, I have been nothing but a nuisance, okay? And I know this, all right? I'm a next drug addict, okay? And I'm presently on house arrest, I'm trying to get through that, okay? I am certified drug and alcohol counselor, all right? I have my credentials right here, if you'd like to look at them, you know, that I'm certified. My next question is, is that I would like to know, is if you can help me with a building to have, start an AAM meeting, because there's nothing here in Mazuma. And I know pretty much all everybody that does drugs in Mazuma, you know? And part of my recovery is to self-help and to help others, and to get back to the community, you know? That's why I'm trying, I'm going to try to clean my place up and get it taken care of. I'm going to do a bad spell, you know? Well, I've got myself back on track, you know, I've got my job back, I'm feeling good, and I'd like to be able to have someplace where I can have the meetings, if I can start that. When it first starts, I'll be under the supervision of house arrest, so it won't be just like, you guys give me a place to do it, and I'll be like, meeting's here, you know what I mean? House arrest, you got a close eye on me, they approve me, you come up here and talk to yous, you know? I don't know if that's something we can do, but I would really like to do it. Like I said, I am certified, you know? I have my diploma right here for a minute. I'm going to take that into consideration and think about it, but I'd like to be part of the solution instead of the pollution here in Mazuma, because like I said, I haven't been nothing but a nuisance since I moved here, and I'd like to get back to the community and try to help them, if that's possible.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. And going down the right, the right path, but, and it takes a lot to come and say that in front of a lot of people.
Absolutely.
And that's the first step, or one of the steps, to speak up. And I'm all for us getting something together in coordination with our town marshal.
On behalf of Tony, when I first came to town in October, he was probably the first guy that approached me, and, you know, he gave me the same sort of spiel, and I think if he's willing to do it, we ought to give him a fair chance. I've not had any issues with him, and he's always seemed to, he's been okay.
Finally, man.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have like a schedule or a certain night or?
No, that would be entirely up to what you guys decide.
From giving them a place to work out.
Are you thinking weekly, once a month, like what are you thinking for that?
Well, I'd like to start it for once a week, and if it's successful, I'd like to move it up to twice a week, because personally, from my personal experience, is that I believe that once a week is enough for addicts, you know what I mean? Because it's real easy to slip and forget that you just went to that meeting when three days have gone by. I'm thinking twice a week, you know, maybe on Tuesday and a Thursday, or a Monday and whatever, whatever's good for you.
Which we'll have to coordinate that with. Due to our building we got, we ran out, the community, not meaning there won't be nights, don't take me wrong there, but that's what helps keep that building going, is our rent and stuff, but let us see what we can get together and try to get you a place to, you know?
I would be willing to open up my building for him to use, I mean, if he needs it, I'm sure that that's probably going to interfere with some of the people that want to participate.
Yeah. I'm not sure they would go if it's there. I mean. He did, but he never did, he never did.
But sometimes it's a help to get somewhere else, and somebody gets started, and then they start realizing what he, you know, being there that, you know?
I was saying, we need to see what.
You got to at least give it a shot.
Because we, we did that for a while.
Right, but it, but we need to give a try to let it try to work.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
So we need to look at the schedule and try to figure out what the schedule would be best, if that's what we decide.
How long do you think the meetings will last?
Well, normally they're like an hour, you know? I mean, it all depends on your schedule and what I can get, and if it's even successful. I mean, you know?
Right.
That's the thing.
But till you go try it, though.
You won't know.
It might be successful, and it might not be, but at least, you know, I'm trying to get back, you know?
That's fine.
Trying to do that, going to go get back and try to help people that are going through the same thing that I'm going through.
And we do appreciate all your efforts, that's true.
No, because I don't have any dates, I can't remember what Penny asked for, for each week.
I don't remember.
Usually Tuesday nights aren't booked, Monday nights, Monday night, the first week of the month is covered.
For the twenty-first of February and the third, or the fourteenth of March, is what she asked for.
Fourteenth of March.
Fourteenth of March. Last time, that, those are the two days she asked for.
Sunday too, so. Tuesday nights I know are scheduled for.
Which night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday nights?
None that I know of. I'll have to check that calendar.
Listen, work with Jeremy, how's that, or with John? She's got a look through, can see how nights are booked, because people book and, and go from there.
You got any idea about, have you talked to anybody, I mean, people you think is going to be there or?
No, sir, I'm going to make some flyers up and put them up at the gas stations and at the dollar store. I mean, because personal, from my personal experience, most people are probably going to show up, but the ones that are forced to show up, you know what I mean? I mean, that's how it's going to probably be. They're going to have to be able to attend a meeting, and so many meetings, and I know that Mazuma don't have anything, and there are people that have to attend meetings, you know? And I want to get involved in that. I mean, I talked to my counselor in Beedruckburg, and he, he really stand behind me on it, you know?
Would he be the one that would have to supervise for you, or would it be somebody else or?
No, they might just pop in on, on one of the meetings, you know, maybe when I give them, give them the schedule of my meeting, they might pop in, you know, just to see if I'm actually doing what I'm saying I'm doing.
Right.
You know, they might attend one, you know, it's, they're not going to say, well, we're going to be there tonight.
Right.
You know, they'll just spring in on me and see what's going on, so.
We'll do that, appreciate that.
Yes.
Can you just check and then let John know and?
Mike?
Thank you.
How about the one with the orange cap?
Oh, really? Okay, ma'am?
I'm okay.
We'll continue with the agenda. Yes. It's cute.
You don't pay any attention to that guy.
Yeah, okay. Got the bank reconciliation for January twenty twenty-one. Utilities is two million one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. The town, seven hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven, thirty-seven cents. Payroll, two thousand two hundred and thirty-six and two cents, and the customer deposits, okay? Thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and zero cents.
I've added it to the monthly meeting, the bank rec, because that was suggested from the state board of accounts, so that's why.
Yeah, cease, times, stay out of jail.
Do you need a motion? So I'll make a motion to accept the bank reconciliation for January of twenty twenty-one.
On favor? Okay, we got two billing adjustments. Water and sewer approved, you're going to have to help me go scapula.
I was just, it's water and sewer adjustment request that you approved at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Just the total amount of them.
No, I understand. But they've, they've already been approved, it's just.
Yeah, I just have to, yeah, sign off.
Okay, write offs for the town.
We need a motion for that.
Okay, sorry, you have a motion to accept those? In favor? Okay, write offs from oh one oh one eighteen through twelve thirty-one eighteen is five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. You need to prove that?
I'm not promoting.
On favor? Thank you. Okay. Insurance companies want to know when the fire truck will be ready for pickup.
Well, we've got our work session now that the weather's broke, we can dress it up all.
So we're going to be safe at Tellman maybe thirty minutes? Maybe?
I'll get with you Monday.
Okay.
Today's Thursday, so. Did you hear anything from USDA on it, or? Did I forward you that email? I can't remember, it was about the time the snow came through, and I was going to talk to them.
They can talk to John again.
Yeah, I don't remember now, for, I mean, they're okay, it's not going to be, I mean, there's going to be stuff signed, and there's going to be stuff to do. But maybe we're going to haul our payment into the new vehicle. They'll give us the title, they'll get, he gets the title, and he'll release the lien on, on the old truck, and then we'll roll the loan into a new truck and just continue to make the payments like we're making on the new, on the new truck. So he, it was, I mean, I think it was, it was, yeah, it was last week, because it was right, I think he emailed me back on Monday or maybe Friday before the, and then we were going to meet, and then the snow apocalypse, so, because I think you were supposed to meet with John, or with Doug Rude that afternoon, and I don't think, yeah, if you were able to do that or not, but, so, yeah, but it's, it's not an issue, I mean, it'll be fine. So other than the fact that, that, I mean, he, we didn't talk about any more money, we just talked about existing money, so if there's more money needed, we're going to figure it out. Well, the replacement cost on it was a lot more than what we had it insured for, so we're probably in trouble. So now we probably need to talk to somebody about how to make up the gap. So we're, we, I mean, we're not necessarily waiting in the, we're going to talk about it later, but. I think we had the vehicle insured for what we paid for, correct? About, just about what we paid for it, unfortunately, which is good, I mean, in a way, but, but it's not that it's buying new ones, so.
Well, it wasn't until last year that we were told emergency vehicles can be replaced at.
We can, yeah, and so I saw some stuff here, the, the insurance has now said, okay, if you want to, we'll pay more, but we can, we can keep increasing the value, so that if you do have an accident, total of one of your emergency vehicles, we, we cover the full replacement cost, not just the value, purchase value of it. So we are going to have a gap now, I don't know if, it depends on how big that gap is as to whether we make it up, you know, somehow locally, or whether we have to go back to RD, which is not a going process, to try and reconfigure the loan, redo the loan, and extend it out again, would probably be an option. But other than the fact that it takes a very long time for RD to do that.
So are they good to go ahead and get quotes?
Yeah, I think we should get, I really need to get some ideas about what this thing's going to cost. Now, we have had to go back through RD, which I'm saying, they say, well, we're going to have to do RFDs, or something like that, but, I mean, I think it'd be good to get, get a handle on what the options are, and how much it's going to cost us to, to get a new one, and so we know, and we know how, we'll know how much money we, we get from the insurance settlement, and then we can do that backwards, figure out how to get a can. I did have, I bought six Corvettes, brand new Corvettes. You probably could. Yeah, so, I mean, I know it wouldn't be as efficient, but it'd be kind of fun. Yeah, so, I mean, I know it wouldn't be as efficient, but it'd be kinda fun.
I'm not right with any of that.
She's about getting a one passenger.
Yeah.
But you have to walk down the department. Everybody guys have the, you know, that.
I doubt it.
Yeah.
The replacement quote that they got, the insurance company had to get one before they decided to total it, and it was four forty.
Well, I, you know, if you stuck one out kind of the way you want, and what you, you say, and you can get some ideas about it. You know, I, maybe you want a smaller and a perfect, but it may be four hundred, it may be four fifty, I don't know.
Oh.
But, yes.
Not that hard. Also, Kathy, I submitted all the loose equipment stuff to the.
To the adjuster?
To Doug, I think.
For the inland marine?
Yeah. Now I want pictures of everything. Is that something else we probably need to look at too, because the, the two listed items that they had on there was the fibrillator and an air compressor for filling our bottles.
Want to move on?
So, by look at that, you mean we need to get quotes on new ones, or where do you?
I don't know how the policy's drawn up, but he about had a condition when I told him how much it costs to replace an air pack at five thousand dollars. Because of the fibrillators, eighteen hundred bucks.
Excuse me, I had a insurance renewal quote. And this is the insurance for.
Yeah, auto, liability, property.
Okay.
Commercial packages.
Okay, it's not the health or the unit.
I brought a copy of that. He sent it to me if they wanna look at it.
Due to a lot of claims last year, like, why not?
Yeah.
Kind of the wells that got lightened.
The renewal quote is forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's up four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars from last year due to claims, so.
And then, sorry, I was trying to find where I put it. He sent me a revised, they had about four o'clock this afternoon, with the fire truck off of there, and the driver's schedule revised, uh, a difference of three thousand one hundred and twenty-seven from last year. So, it would be, uh, the renewal would be forty-four thousand five ninety-seven. If they only get to do fire truck, it will be out.
Is that increasing the coverage of?
No, all he's waiting on is, that'll go up too. He's, I've got your figures. I've got a list here for them, for somebody to give me values. Once they turn that in, it'll change also.
Because we'll be in the same boat if we don't change it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I make the motion, accept this one. Go on the next one.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we got resolution twenty twenty one dash oh two dash oh one. We add, uh, yeah, the annual financial report. We need a motion to accept or approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution two zero two one dash oh two dash oh one.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You have the original copy?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of noisy, you know? We talked last meeting about getting Mark Hansen up here from Suez to talk about the water tower. And, uh, he couldn't make tonight's meeting. He'll be on vacation to March twelfth. So, our regular meeting in March. He will be there. And that will be. Eighteenth, yep. And, uh, the fourth will be our project meetings.
Yep.
When they come back. We got a copy of the gas meter quote. I'm looking for.
And I just put it in your package, because I would ask you, but I don't know anything about it, so I don't know if you want to wait to get it back.
And it says that gas meters are outdated. And if something goes wrong, it's gonna take six weeks to, Vanessa, for the sawmill, so.
And the station and a bunch of them.
Yes.
Most places from all I have is from.
Okay. But, yeah, I have. I need some more information on that personally.
How many shots do you look at about that?
Yeah.
All right.
That's just one quote too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And this next one goes, uh, Doug Greer of Epic Insurance, talking about their virtual vehicle like John brought up. And they get the amount, I think that was the list you were talking about, Kathy?
Yeah.
That we need some value from the fire department on.
That Ken, two thousand ten Kenworth tanker, is that the one that you took and refurbished it to use for, what am I thinking?
No.
That was the first response.
No, it was blocked. Uh, the Kenworth truck was blocked from Bausch Brothers Fire under a grant from FEMA, I believe.
I just double-checked this listing, but this is what we need to make sure we have the replacement cost. And he, he will do equipment, right?
Well, I kinda told him. I said it really does a kind of injustice for the total of thirty-five thousand dollar vehicle, but it's really worth fifty thousand if we damage everything inside.
That's what I'm getting confused, because, like, the equipment on this fire truck falls under our inland marine. So, I'll just make sure I separate the cost of the vehicle, replacement cost, and equipment cost, if you could give it to me that way. I think that goes on one policy and the vehicle just on auto policy. But here's.
The inland marine stuff, do we have to have an inventory of everything, or what are they doing?
Well, maybe more than I know. I split.
Everything onboard. I need to stop.
We can't insure if you don't know what we got.
I think, Kate, I mean, if something should happen, if it's not listed, I think it's, a lot of it's listed and they're miscellaneous. I know, like, your air packs and all that stuff are already listed, because every time you purchase something, I send it to them. So, maybe I can copy that list of what they have, and we can cipher out what's not on it.
Yeah, let me know what you got.
Okay. Are you coming by to see me Monday, or just kidding?
With them.
I'll keep for your lunch.
I don't know. I was thinking the same thing. What's the magic seventeen foot trailer? Two thousand seven. Chief and Assistant Chief. What's the two thousand seven magic seventeen foot trailer?
Is that the boat trailer you're talking about?
That's what I was wondering.
Probably, I don't know.
It is.
Oh, it's the boat, okay.
They don't want to know about the boat. This trailer?
It's the United trailer. The boat's covered, but it's, it's not on the vehicle. It's not a vehicle.
Oh, okay.
It's on the inland marine.
So, the other, the other two trailers are the ones that are outside. And there's that one you're talking about, the one they converted over. That's a F three fifty, that's the one they converted over.
The three fifty. The five thirty-five. I'm pretty sure. Is the two thousand four five thirty-five, or F three fifty five thirty-five? Yes.
It's five thirty-five. That's what you converted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, the rest of the statement about the, we need to check in every year and see what the value of the dollar is, if it be contained and all that.
The suggestion was that you guys should probably consider every year at renewal time, increasing it, what do you say, forty-five percent? Take a look at it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Bob?
No. Oh, there it is, sorry. There it is. I don't know how to say this right, but, uh, the weather is breaking since the papers are here, and they can put this in there. I am asking, and probably the rest of the board, if people will start looking at cleaning their properties up due to the weather starting to change, and we're asking to save it. We all want a clean town, and it saves us from having to go in and give letters, and it's very expensive, but the town's gotta go in and clean them up.
Yep.
At the cost of our equipment, help, and everything else to pull them off another job. Thank you.
Terry?
Someone asked us in the town, clean up this country in like a month because it's so big.
I don't think we.
Usually in May, usually the super ticket.
Yeah.
Diner, with the day, and then she schedules the whole tour.
Yeah.
But, while you brought that up, I think we need to revisit what the fire and what people can bring. It was started so that people would clean their yards up and bring their own lawn bleacher or whatever. We got people bringing couches and chairs and.
Refrigerators and bed beds.
Within an hour after opening and.
Yeah.
We might want to revisit how we word that place to refine the sheet.
Do we have a burn order?
Yes.
Yes, we do. You can get a copy of it up to utility office.
Okay.
Yeah, there is one. In fact, we just redid it.
Last year?
Yep.
Yeah. Not that long ago.
Yeah, a few months ago.
I don't have any. Shona?
I don't have anything.
Dave?
Nothing.
Kathy?
I think, I think, because everything on the list, Scott has something.
Couple things. Um, there's a resolution. I don't, did they give you their package, Kathy, that resolution?
Yes.
So, um, it's the one I tried to do last month, but between Kathy and I, we don't have it, Matt and Kathy. This is authorizing, we, we borrowed money from our electric utilities today, who were, are part of the sewer project, because it wasn't covered by a brand. Um, we went over the original loan estimate by sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, so we are authorized, we're just getting the money. Uh, we're authorizing that loan. Of course, we also ended up having to do more than we thought we were gonna have to do. Uh, and it also develops the payment schedule, or repayment schedule, um, for, um, we're gonna have this paid off at the same time, and scheduled it so that it'll pay off at the same time as the RD loan. But it is going to be, uh, payments of, of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars every six months. We're already a month behind, so Kathy is blunt. But. Thanks, Scott. Uh, we won't hold it against her because we can have the payment schedule done until now. But this just will formalize things, and, and, and then when she gets audited, they'll be able to see it was all, we, we did authorize the big loan earlier. You don't know exactly how much you're gonna have to, what payments you're gonna be until you're all done with it, and you end up using all of it plus them. So, um, you know, it's gonna be another twenty-two thousand a year, but.
Yeah.
Better, better than what you get if you borrow it from a bank or anything like that. But it is, it is a, it's one point two five percent, which is, um, interest rates are low, but they're not that low. Just need you to approve that, and, yeah, you can start making the, the payments. We'll be paying, they'll be paying this for one year because we're all done with it.
What's the resolution number?
It's a zero two zero two, zero two dash zero.
You have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion. Resolution oh two dash oh two.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Uh, two other things. Uh, one is I had a conversation today with a financial consultant at Baker Tilly, who was talking about some other matters. And he told me that they, and I, I could not find what I was looking for. There's a COVID, there's a, a big relief bill in Congress, you may have heard about this. It has a lot of money in it right now for state and local governments. And there have been some preliminary estimates released. He did not have, he was driving one of them, but he had seen Vigo County. And Vigo County would get twenty million from this. So, I went back and looked, uh, what I, I looked up what they got out of the last time they did this, and we got that CARES Act money. Vigo County got three point five from it. So, if they, I, I, I don't want to get everyone's expectations broken, but there could be, you know, we did get some CARES Act money. But, but if this bill passes, it could mean considerably more money than we even got out of CARES Act. You know, that's more than five times what Vigo County got the last time. So, um, I'm sure we'll end up spending on fire trucks, but, yeah, but, uh, there could be, that, that could happen, and, and, and so we'll want to keep an eye on that and see if that bill goes through, because it does offer a lot of relief for state and local governments. The other thing, and it came up, uh, I, I did not know about this. Apparently, there was a law passed in twenty seventeen for, um, if you have debt that's owed to, uh, a government entity like the town of Monzuma. There's a way you can certify that debt, and it goes into the state, and then the state will withhold it from a person's state tax refund. And, yeah, I did not know about this. Now, there, um, there was an team was sending out an email, and they were gonna have a, you know, a webinar or something about it. And there's a companies, there are companies that tend to do it, of course, for you. They, they take care of doing what needs to be done at the state, you put on a paperwork, you provide them the information. I didn't, I'd never heard of it. There's another attorney in my office who does a lot of municipal stuff. She's the Brazil attorney, and so on, and some other places. And so I asked her, I said, you heard about this? And she said, yeah, I know about it. She said, they came to talk to us, but, but, but the city council in Brazil didn't want to use that. They wanted to use some other company that does more standard collections to go in through the courts. Which I understand that too, but I, I, I was looking at your, when I saw that write off list, I thought, that's kind of a neat, neat way, because it just, you know, takes it right out, has to, and it may take years to get paid on some of it. Or maybe that would cause people to come in, they realize, oh, wait a minute, I'm not gonna get my, it's not the federal income tax refund, it's just a state tax refund. The state said, if you, if you owe money to, to the county or to the, you know, the town of Monzuma, um, we're, we're not gonna refund your taxes. We're gonna pay that money to the Monz, the town of Monzuma. So, if that's something you'd be interested in, I can get the contact info to Kathy and.
I, myself, yes, I'd be interested in, because I know for a fact, I mean, that's a small amount, what has been written off before.
Yeah.
It's been twenty, twenty-five thousand at a time.
Yeah, I know, and you, you guys, it's not just, you know, a little, I said, a little bit of the water, you get into, start getting the gas. Yeah, I know, and you, you guys, it's not just, you know, a little, I said, a little bit of the water here, you get in, starting to collect the gas, it's pretty expensive, so, um, it might be, you know, they, I guess you told me they charge like 25%, but just 25%.
Better than that, right?
You still, because her books, she still might have to write it off, but...
Yeah, we would still have to write it off, and then it would be Ms. Lee's revenue when it does.
I'll get you some info about that, yeah.
Yeah, Bobby, since, a write-off, how did, how did that work?
It just clears up her books. The people still always on it.
After two years, when the bill comes delinquent after two years, it has to be totaled, two years, then we write them off the books. They can still be processed in small claims court, because some of those are ongoing.
Okay.
But, um, it just gets them off our books, so we don't still show them.
Doesn't shows it and counts for something.
Can't receive them.
Okay.
So essentially, if you look at, I don't know, shooters, I'd say, you know, oh, well, we still have $6,000 coming, well, no, I mean, it's been two years, they're not gonna pay it. So we're trying to be realistic about the odds. Now, of course, you know, if you do get some extra, then that's great. So I, I, I do not know about this well, I'm doing it that way, because that's longer.
Yeah, you'd audit, you're gonna be carrying something that's yours.
It's that old? That you're not carrying for that one?
Yeah.
Find the records.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that was all I wanted to bother you with, all right? You're up, Dave.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.